Hey, dude. Sorry to interrupt you, but at the end of the meeting, I've got a couple of questions I want to ask you. And if I say this now, I may remember later on.
Questions that you're going to ask me when?
At the end of the meeting.
Oh.
We came back here just for these fancy paper clips. These are the best.
So who calls the meeting to order? We don't have a chair.
Well, I guess we kind of still do. This is vice chair, I guess. It is six o'clock. It's 6:01, as a matter of fact. So we will call this the Select Board Regular Meeting for Monday, June 16th, 2025. Which is the regular meeting of the Lyman Select Board. This meeting is a public proceeding and it's being recorded. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So item number one is the Select Board to vote for the chair. Let's start by position.
I nominate Victoria Gabel for chair.
I'll second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Since we sort of had the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Nope. It was unanimous. I get the vote for myself, right?
Hmm, oh yeah.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And so moving on, vice chair.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. After me. I'll make a motion to nominate Amber for vice chair.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? No one opposed because it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Fire Commission member?
I nominate Victoria Gabel for the Fire Commission.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do we do ECO main or was it just?
This is further on down.
It's not a board thing to do ECO main. It's actually someone gets appointed or it's just been Amber, so.
Alright.
But it's down here.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't.
Yeah, we can do it.
Cool. Yeah, now I see it. Thank you. Item number two, public input. Public in attendance will have up to five minutes to address the board. Please use the podium to address the board and please be respectful of others. The board may not be able to respond to Q and A during public comment. If you wish to be placed on a future agenda, please contact the town manager. Is there anyone? Moving along some more. We have mail and we have the York County Sheriff report. I didn't see any mail. I just saw the report.
Yeah.
I am hoping that we will, once Dylan gets going in the chief position, that we will start getting the reports again from the fire chief. So item number three, unfinished business. The franchise agreement. There isn't any updates. He just updated us that there's no updates.
That's right.
Item B is review approved Select Board Code of Conduct.
I'm making a motion to accept.
Do you want to accept it with the changes that you suggested?
I was gonna, I was gonna say to accept it with the change that Joel wanted to make adding the substantia. Subs, I can't say the word. Can you say it?
Substantive.
Thank you. In the new member onboarding.
Well, on the fourth bullet on page one. To discuss substantive town business.
That's it, I'm sorry.
That's good. Dave made that the motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We have a treasurer report. And a report from the Parks and Rec for June. I remember that once upon a time, we had to vote to approve these as well. I know we don't do that, no, but just came back into my memory bank. I'm excited to see in the Lyman Parks and Rec report that the concerts in the park will be starting July 10th and will run every Thursday at 6:30 and then end on August 21st. They're trying to get food trucks.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they have Mo's Italian Sandwich Truck for July 17th and August 7th. And then there's some other things in the report. I'm sure you don't all want me to sit here and read the whole thing, although I can if you want.
I'm just the one question. Is there a flyer on the performers for concert in the park yet?
I don't know. I would have to refer the, to Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Or would you know?
Parks and Rec does the flyers. I haven't received any.
Okay, thank you.
And that'll be posted on the website, I suppose?
I haven't received any. They have to give me something.
Respectively?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's also trail updates and updates from Bunginut Park. Parks and Rec Bunginut Park ramp update. And pictures and whatnot. They're going through the same process I went through for a PBR application and they began to work on their thousand foot butter list, which you have to send every butter within a thousand feet of every direction. Piece of mail. I only got two back when I did mine, but I don't know how many that entails, but it's a lot of work. Also, would you want to speak about, did you find anything out about the tag?
Yeah, I went out there with Holly. I actually went out there with a contractor and pretty much walked around aimlessly for an hour. I couldn't find it. But then Holly came and met me and she brought me to it. It does need to be addressed. And I think, I think we're handling that.
Good, thank you. Is there anything else that you'd want to add? To any of this? You see all the pictures and things of, things that they want to work on?
Yeah, that's what, it needs to be, it really is a rusted out piece of work, but it can just, that can just be squashed and picked up at a later date, but something has to happen with the holes.
That, yeah, it looks.
It's good that they got the tape around it.
Looks like an ankle breaker to me.
Yeah. I mean, obviously the bridge too was very, very suspect.
How, how deep are these?
Eighteen inches. That's all it was, yeah.
Are they galvanized cans that are squished down?
You know, it looks like some sort of manifold grease trap, but you know, I don't know if that was the actual placement of it or if they had it at the restaurant or whatever they had there and then just sort of dumped it in the woods and that's where it died.
Yeah, okay. Well, I saw the logs sticking out of one of them, so I thought, what are they fence boards holders?
It's not that deep. It's definitely ankle breaker, but it's not that deep.
I wonder if it would be who was just to fill it. Fill it?
That bridge on the next last, the third page needs to, needs some attention.
Dave, in terms of that bridge and bog bridges, is creosote or pressure treated permissible?
The pressure treated of today is, the creosote of yesterday isn't.
Okay. Alright. Thanks.
But that one there, I mean for, you know, fifteen foot, even less telephone poles, we could do the same thing. We have enough lumber there to, you know, make that work.
Okay.
Unless the lumber gets used for other projects.
Do you want to do the PBR or Vicky?
Excuse me?
Do you guys want to do the PBR or Vicky?
Hey, you know what I decided when I did that last one? I'm never doing another one. That will be the responsibility of the homeowner next time. But I would help do one if, if necessary. In this case. It's real nice that she took all those pictures and stuff.
This was a nice job.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. While we're talking about Parks and Recs from the Park and Rec Report, we know we got the grant for the tables and chairs and benches and stuff.
On the agenda.
On the agenda too, okay. Nevermind. Talk about the report. She got everything covered. We'll move on to number, item number five of new business then. Number one A is, I don't seem to have an A. Have C, E, F, G, H.
We just have to appoint him. I don't know.
Oh, sorry. I just, I wrote it in the thing. So Chief, Fire Chief as Director of Emergency Management Agent, Forest Fire Warden, Chieftain and Director of Emergency Medical Service. And you can do it all in one motion if you want, but I do have separate oath sheets. And Holly's here, so I don't know if she wants to speak to the Parks and Rec report. If that's why you can, I don't know.
I can if they have questions.
Okay, yeah, so they just covered it.
Yeah, we were talking about it for several minutes, but.
I was in Portland visiting with an baby.
It's an awesome report, complete with pictures and whatnot. I like it.
Have questions?
We don't. I don't.
You? Yeah, I do. Do you, are you gonna do, are you gonna put the paint nights on my rec?
They're cash though, so I don't know how that works.
We can advertise it as cash only. You know, pay at the, at the event, cash only. Yeah.
And they sign up that way?
Yeah, they could register that way. Yeah. Instead of them emailing you or going back and forth. And you can like, say you only have space for maybe like 12 attendants or something, we can put a cap on that. So once you hit 12, no more is going to register. Okay, yeah, we could do that. So my rec program's really pretty cool.
It's good.
I just thought, because when people are going on to register for, if they wanted to go on to like look for the paint night, would they be able to see, okay, there's 12 spots, but oh, five of them are gone?
I believe so. I haven't done a program event. The only thing what I would ask is just because I can't like, it's a lot of like web design and building. So I would ask that like the Parks and Recs committee or somebody like, create what you want on the website. Like what do you want to write? How do you want to look? You know, if you have specific things you want to, you know, inform the public about, like you guys are going to be writing the content. And then I would just copy and paste it however I need to copy and paste it. And then as far as the registrations, I could set it up so it would like go to the Parks and Recs email to notify like, hey, you got a registration. But I can't, I can't do all the web building. I can't do all the content creation because it's like.
So you mean like actually putting it on the website, not just giving me what we want to put on?
I would want, no, I can put it on the website. I just need like, instead of just saying, we're going to do paint night Friday, like I want Parks and Recs to write basically an advertisement.
Gives you the flyer?
Yeah. Well, no, there, this is like, this is not like Facebook and Instagram and MailChimp where you can just like plug in a picture. It's the back end of it is a program that you have to like navigate. It does not look like the front end. So I have to go through different sections and a lot of it is like what you see on the front end for like the fields and bunga, and the pines and, you know, the policies and this and that. Like on the back end, I've plugged all that information in there. So I would need, it could be a Word document, just something I can copy and paste. And it could be like an advertisement, you know, hey, come aboard our Friday paint night and so and so, and this is the paint we're going to do. And, you know, you're informing the public. So it's like, if you're putting something out there and somebody is going to register, what information would you need to attract people to register for the program? It's, to me, it's like an advertisement, sort of.
Okay, so if we still advertise like on Facebook, it would send them to that? Is that what, how would we, we would do that?
We could put a link in there, yeah. But I need, I just don't want to be the one building the content for it because it can be really time consuming when you're doing it for multiple programs.
I just wondered like if it would take off of, you know, Parks and Rec, if that's something that, you know, you guys are. And since we're paying for the program, it'd be nice if we started using it, you know, like I would.
I didn't know we were doing it for programs yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I told you that.
I had a lot going on, sorry.
I know, I know you do.
I appreciate your work.
Yeah.
Is there anything else for Parks and Rec?
I'm sure. I had a question, Holly, about the flyer on concerts in the park or roster of performers. Is that in the works?
It is in the works. Almost done.
Alright, thanks.
We're looking forward to that.
Have you guys talked about like what to do with the swing set or the holes?
No. We have not talked about that yet. It's coming later, right?
No, it's, it was in the report.
It's been the pre- report.
Yeah, it's in.
We just don't know what to do about it. Like the hole needs to be filled.
Oh yeah, we, we.
Are you all set with that?
Yeah, yeah. Moving forward with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Dave's taking care of all the little hole thingies. And then the swing set. I don't know what you guys want to do.
Is it still wet?
Yeah, Holly went and dug a hole and it just filled up with water. So I don't know. We want to spend money on wood chips if it's just going to get soggy. I think it needs to be moved. I just don't know where.
I think Kevin suggested closer to where the disability parking is going to be located, but an elevation of another foot or so from where it is right now. So we wouldn't have the same drainage problem. I don't know how involved and expensive that would be though.
Fill? That's a, that's a lot in the, if it's that wet to get, get the fill in there and to get it spread and stuff is a whole nother ball of wax, isn't it?
I mean, there's like definitely some significant restoration that park needs. I don't know that you're going to be able to like relocate the swing set to a, unless you put it up top, but then it's not near where everybody's visiting.
I think that's something we should probably really formulate a plan for before, you know, I don't think there's an easy answer to it.
No, I don't think there is.
I think it's, it's going to be a little, it's going to take a little work and thought. I don't know where you would move it to right off the top of my head either, but I know that that is a total low spot, no matter what. And I don't even know if it would get much drier, even if you filled it, because that's where the water is always trying to go to the lake. It's always trying to go to the lake, so it might be who was to do the wood chips. At least they're going to be a little, a little bit absorbent. And you won't be like going right into the mud, up to your ankles.
If we put more, will it just?
Yeah, they're down there just going to, the chips are just going to swim around.
Well, yeah, but they'll, they'll absorb some water. They do take on some.
I mean, if you kind of like maybe ditch it right at the slope, like if it's, the water's coming down the slope and you ditch it right there, just so that it has a place to run behind the swing set.
That's another thing I was going to say is maybe we can do some swaling.
At least get it diverted in a different direction. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Pretty strange this.
Yeah, usually I think it dries out, but it's not drying out.
That's because we're raining every weekend.
Yeah.
But I also think too that, I mean, it's supposed to be, it's forecast to be actually be summery soon, so. It may get some drying out happening.
So should we go ahead with the wood chips? It was just a lot of money and I didn't want to do it if it was just going to be soggy.
I don't, I think that probably we should hold off until we make a decision. On it, don't you? I mean, that's what I think.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything else for Parks and Rec?
No, thank you for the report. It was very nice.
So we'll move on to new business again. And I make a motion to appoint Fire Chief Dylan Martin as Director of Emergency Management Agent, Forest Fire Warden, Chieftain and Director of Emergency Medical Service.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Aye? No one opposed because it was unanimous. Item B is Massabesic Little League Discussion Regarding Bunginut Concession Stand For Use As A Storage Shed For Massabesic Little League.
Greg Mitchell, 38, Dorothy Lane, President of Massabesic Little League. Afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
For many years when we used Bunginut Field, during the season, we kept the cart of equipment in the lower shed there to wheel across the field to the back corner where the softball field is. So we have rakes, paint sprayers, field drags and stuff that the coaches use at the end of practice, so it's ready to go for the next practice. So that's been kind of the norm for many years. I don't know exactly what time period it was, but the town gave a key to Massabesic Little League and we just kept it at a lockbox there on the shed so that the coaches knew that combo of that. And then they would use the shed with the key back at the end. So that's the, that was the norm for many years come, or in previous years. And then you guys want to change up the shed keys, which is fine, that's what you guys want to do. But are we not allowed to use it moving forward? Because not being able to store some of that stuff is going to be pretty difficult to maintain the fields like they should. Every field that baseball, softball plays anywhere in the state, there's a shed there with all the same basic equipment.
Is that a shed or a concession stand?
It's a concession stand.
Yeah, I mean, it's got the upstairs shed or storage in the bottom. But during the baseball season, nobody uses it as a concession stand, so. Just wondering if we're going to be able to use it in the future or because in the middle of the season, it got changed and we were told to move the stuff out. So we promptly did that. Got all our stuff out of there. I think soccer's been doing the same thing, so I don't know if you guys plan moving forward with it, but it's going to be hard to use, use that field like it's intended to be used, so. Any discussion or thoughts on that?
The, the board, as we talked about this before, if you guys remember, the previous board, you know, we were going to work on that concession stand and utilize it through other committees as possible fundraisers and things of that nature. I did go up there. It's a mess. It's, actually, there was a rodent nest in there. It was pretty nasty. So everything was cleaned out except trash and the rodent's nest.
So fun.
So I think, you know, either we're going to use it for a storage or we're going to use it for a concession stand.
I've never been up there personally, so I would like to go up someday and see what it looks like in there, to see how much space is in there, because I agree, I think that we could be using that. There's committees out there that want to fundraise and they don't have that opportunity, like the cemetery committee. I'm sure if they, you know, knew that there was going to be a ballgame up there, they might be like, okay, we'll come up with, you know, some crock pots full of food and we'll sell, you know. So I, I don't want to make it a, I don't want to make it a storage shed. I mean, we as the town, we have to pay storage to a facility to store our own equipment. We are paying $125 a month, you know, to store stuff for the town. And I don't think it's fair to taxpayers to let entities just store their stuff for free.
Again, it's only during the season. We remove them every, every season. So for the eight weeks that we play, you can't drag a field. I'm not going to ask random coaches to drag a four by six metal steel drag in the back of a little Camry to down to the field every day. It's just not practical.
I don't, I don't think I'd be opposed to the Massabesic Little League putting their own shed there to use.
You can get like storage pods.
There is plenty of room. That's what I'm saying. And then that would take care of it.
Then that's their own, yeah.
It's either that or you're not going to be able to work, clean it. It really needs to be sealed. You know, you're not, it's not something that you're going to walk in there and set slapping, you know, food down. It's not like that.
So what are, what are you thinking?
I'm, I'm thinking that if we're going to push to have committees do that, then we're committing it to be a concession stand. You know, no, obviously no problem having them put a storage shed on the property. That's, that's easy.
That would be, that would solve both issues, I think. You'd still have a place to store stuff and.
Yeah, soccer needs to store some stuff as well, so.
Maybe you guys can get matching storage sheds.
Or one for both?
Yeah, one for both, yeah.
Side by each.
So I, so we don't know exactly what we want to do with it. We don't want, so I mean, for us, on our side, it's like I said, we have a wagon cart that all of our stuff fits into. So it's quite small. There's plenty of room to have a cart full of that stuff and still have a concession stand in there. So there's ample room.
The only, the only concern I have is, like I said, the rodent's nest that was there, the trash that was in there. And if it's going to be used for food, probably nothing else should be in there. That's, that's my concern.
You guys couldn't get like a storage pod or a storage shed, even if it was like a temporary storage pod?
I mean, ideally it would be a smaller shed on the far side.
Yeah. And it would be yours and, you know, you wouldn't have to give us a key. It's yours.
Yeah.
Just leave it there permanently?
Yeah.
Or at least until the town asks you to move it.
Put it on a skid, so if it ever had to be moved, four, four tractors would.
I mean, we, we've looked at done shed to other fields as well, so we just would need to have. I mean, we, we've looked at done shed to other fields as well. So we just would need to have moveable for that. As long as you guys are fine with it.
I'd be okay. I'd be okay with it, but I would.
Make it movable. That's all, just in case for whatever.
I'd be okay with it, but I would also, um, it would, there would be a condition that, uh, the town is not liable for any of it. Not, not for the shed, not for the equipment in it. Like we're not gonna be liable for your stuff up there. That, that would be my condition.
Yeah.
I don't know how anybody else feels about that. But I don't, I've had it.
Uh, I guess we got nothing else. If, if any other questions on that or?
We'll have to write something up or? Would you be doing it right away or would you be doing it next year?
Our season has, has come to a close, uh, for a regular season. So, it'd be something to kind of forecast for next year. So sometime we could kind of maybe drop something and, and send you guys a proposal if, if that's the way we're moving forward. But I mean, yeah, like I said, the, the other side is not, the terrain's not very good on the backside of that fence by the softball field. So that's the only thing that we've had to kind of come through. You know, the, the far side closer to the weight is pretty rough parking lot over there. But I don't know if we could be down there or be up by the field. It's pretty slow right there. So it's a be a kind of a difficult spot to put it.
I think, um.
I thought you might put it near the, near the field, you know?
Grab a stake, grab a stake and drive it where you, where you, where you want it. At the leisure, they can drive by and just check it out. Put a, put a ribbon on it.
That's a good idea.
That's good.
I would also recommend if you can just put something like signage on there that it's property of Massabesic Little League. That way, you know, it could be there for the next 10 years, but if we're not here, it's no like, is this the town's? Is this yours? Cause you know, things get lost in the shuffle. It's, it's very easy.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Uh, item C, review approve real estate property tax abatement. Reference account, uh, 1083.
Is, is this for a specific piece of property?
Yes, this is, uh,
11-7.
Something that we were working on and the, the one that was missed.
We did a correction on it.
On not a road.
It has like the highlighted text. So that's all just, that's the motion. Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to, the town shall approve the abatement of the July 1, 2022 supplemental tax on map 11 lot 007 in the amount of $2,177.53 due to error in accordance with Title 36 Maine Revised Statutes, Section 841, Subsection 1.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm with abstain from going.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have three in the affirmative and one abstention. And, uh, item D. Wait a minute. Let's see, the select board grant management for AARP challenge grant. Um, I don't seem to have a D.
I don't know if it's in there. It's just discussion. So you guys were all on the emails. Um, basically it's just, we've been awarded money for the picnic tables and the chairs, but there's more process to it than just being awarded money. So.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to talk about, um, earlier.
Well, I'll volunteer to be a point person on this. I've contacted Holly, Holly and Karen. About all four of us getting together to address the, uh, questions that, uh, Jeanette had put together. Where will the product be shipped? We're informally just saying that, um, an RFP, RFP may not be necessary in that we may be purchasing these four items separately and therefore three bids for each might suffice.
Yep, it might. Depends. You know, I think if you, I feel like if you get it from all one vendor, you know, and it's a chair and it's a table and it's all one vendor, I kind of feel like it would need to be an RFP. But if it was different vendors, then you're gonna have to get some quotes.
I know Karen already has done some research on that and we'll continue with that. Vicki, you mentioned the place on, in Scarborough, US. That sells that type of material. So.
Yeah, they got a million of them out there in all different colors.
Yeah. Then the only thing I need, so any reporting documentation, I just, we just need to keep a file here.
I'm gonna be up there tomorrow. I don't know what time they open, but I'll be up there like nine o'clock after my lift. I could stop in and get their contact information.
That'd be great. And I think we might be getting together Thursday. Okay.
The other part of that, that I wanted to talk about too is when we get all this stuff, it's a lot to put in and take out. You know, in the past, we've had the Y and they were supposed to do the things with tables and and stuff. And that was kind of not happening all the way. And so, uh, I would like to figure out how this stuff is gonna be taken care of. But I would move that for this year or as long as I serve on this board currently construed that I would, I will go help lug them and put them away.
Same.
Wherever that we decide that is.
But aren't these composite?
Yep.
They're heavy.
Yeah, they are.
Like, like bogcat fork truck type heavy.
Yeah, they're on the cars.
You're not gonna lift them up the hill.
If they're designed like industrial strength to withstand the weather, I mean, could it just be like you tip them over or something and?
Well, if it's a composite, you don't even have to tip them over.
Some of that's like, maybe it stays out. I don't know. I know that for the, you know, I'm thinking along the nerve of the picnic tables. They're not well if you leave them outside like that. The snow sits on them. It starts rotting them out and stuff. So the composite stuff, I don't know, but I, I just wanna know that, uh, that they A, get taken care of because even though they were grant funded, doesn't mean we shouldn't take care of them.
Yeah.
And B, I don't, I don't wanna put all that on, on the Park and Rec Committee. I think they do enough. And that's a lot. That's a lot to ask.
Maybe in the shopping part of it, it could be like, you know, you're specifically looking for items that can stay out in the weather. You know, and not, not getting stuff that would have to.
So, and we wouldn't be worried about somebody running off of them. They're really heavy, but.
Well, you can, you can do that and, and you can anchor them to the ground with a, with a ground anchor, you know?
And just for the record, I could carry one in each hand and go up the hill.
We can make that a fundraiser.
Fundraiser, oh yeah.
Yes.
I think I'd rather, I'd rather, um, for a fundraiser, let somebody wax my uni bra. But that's, that's for another time.
That's great.
So Joe, if you're gonna lead it, are you gonna kind of be the communicator that just kind of keeps everyone apprised of everything? Okay, good. And are you doing all the after reporting and anything that comes up, surveys, whatever?
I'll pick that up.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Is there anything more on the, uh, on that subject? Move on to E, review approve annual treasurer's disbursement policy.
So the only thing I see is that my name is spelt wrong, isn't it?
Yours?
Current municipal officers. I would love to be Amber Sweet, but unfortunately I'm not.
Who's this guy, Joseph?
Oh, okay. Cause I was looking at that.
Yeah, so like in that one, yeah.
I've been spelling your name that way the whole time.
So that would, yeah.
Um, this gets done each year. I don't know if you guys just wanna like make a little correction on the signed.
On the signed one? Okay.
Yeah.
So just pro forma.
And there's no changes to it. It's just, it's the same.
Yep. It's just, it allows the treasurer to, um, disperse release funds for like motor vehicles that we collect for the state. We would have to pay the state, um, in payroll and stuff like that.
Says it may be renewed at any time before it's lapse. So, did entertain a motion on it when you want me ready?
No, I'd move that. We renewed the, uh, policy on the treasurer's disbursement warrants for employees' wages and benefits and state fees collected by the town. With the corrections to the names.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. F is review and approve the annual order of application of payments to unpaid taxes.
You moving to accept this also?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's no one opposed because it's unanimous. Item G.
Madam Chair, so I don't mean to rush the, to go off tangent, but just one thing, uh, wanted to mention. Uh, some time back, I think it was April 4th, we got a, uh, alert from NMA about a, a referendum, uh, that may be appearing on the ballot in November that challenges the, the state budget. I believe the, uh, due date for those signatures, uh, is Wednesday of this week. Uncertain as to whether or not the, the requisite number of signatures then, uh, would be acquired. But, uh, in the event that they were, I think that would pose a significant challenge for every school district and municipality and state. In that it would suspend any pay, state payments to school districts and municipalities. I don't mean to be alarmist here, but, uh, it's just sort of a dark cloud out there that, uh, may be coming our way. And I just wanna make sure that we're aware of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item G, review and approve. Uh, Parks and Reps Committee Member Resignation.
No motion, it dies.
Make a motion to accept it. She can't make it, she can't make it. It's unfortunate.
You can't move it to a different date.
I, I'd like to know why we can't move it to a different date.
I have a school board, excuse me. I have a school board two Mondays a month and the state can't, I can't miss those.
But there's others.
There was no way to make it work. Like we were gonna lose one or two people no matter what we did. This was the best way and we only lost one instead of two. Wednesdays are best for me. So, I mean, I could design if that was best, but I can't. Just the way it is. We can't make it. It's too hard with all the people that would fall to try to make one day work. We had a day that worked great with the library, but then we had to move it here.
I thought Thursday kind of worked for everybody. Except for the month of the concerts.
Worked in July and August.
Well, we could still meet on the night of, uh, cause this one was the month, right? So we could still meet like during concerts.
Thursday didn't work for none either.
She didn't come to concerts in the park? I'm just not, I'm not quite worth it by YouTube. Like I'm not gonna watch YouTube to be part of the committee and I just can't do that. I'm more hands on than, that's just really, would be a waste of money. My abilities.
Okay.
I did offer that so then she could still volunteer.
Well, with regret, second motion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? No.
I'm abstaining.
Well, and I don't know. It's, uh, it's not a, I guess it fails then.
I think we should try and make something else work. That's the case.
Well, cause there's not five of us today.
Well, then, see you in two weeks.
Table.
Yes, let's table it and.
Table it, then I resend the motion.
We already went through it. Just table it.
Okay. H is quit claim deed for the transfer of the Road Toll property to the Cemetery Association of Goodwins Mills Association.
Um, you don't have to make a motion on it because the town voted on this, but, um, Brad gave me the final document. So you will need to sign it tonight.
Okay.
And unless you have any questions or anything.
I think it looks fine. But I have to ask Amber if she sees anything that stands out.
I don't. This is, I don't, I didn't see this in my, or if I did, I don't remember it because I didn't read it. I don't see anything in it. Nothing jumps out to me.
And again, this is the little slice of, uh, territory where Road's Hole used to be.
Yeah. Yeah. And that was voted on by the people when last November. That's what I thought.
We did vote. It looks good.
So we don't have to vote on that.
No.
Okay.
But, um, it's the will of the people.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll move to A. What will I on there?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Amber Swat. Amber Sweet Swat.
For Eco Maine Rip.
Mm-hmm. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye. Sorry.
It's unanimous. Um, we have a planning board reappointment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously.
Wanna just clarify like who it was?
Yeah, I was just gonna do that. Uh, that we have reappointed William Single to the planning board. And for the IT committee, we have the two members who are up for reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed because it's unanimous that we have, uh, appointed William Single and Nigel Sampson to the IT committee.
So I do know that on the bottom here and that, uh, on, for the IT committee, about the specific goals for the position, I think that's something we probably should talk about as a board. Cause I know that somebody had pointed out to us that there are a lot of the links on the website don't work. So that might be something that.
We test them.
We could, yeah.
Ask them to fix the website?
Well, to note, to like, let us know which, which links are broken so that somebody, you know. Well, to note, to like, let us know which, which links are broken, so that somebody, you know, who's
Basically audited it.
So the town manager doesn't have to click on every link.
Is, I can invite them to a meeting, and you guys can have that discussion with them.
Yeah, that works.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
And if you think of anything else that
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like, if we have other ideas for, for them to do.
I have had people comment that the website doesn't work as well as it could. And I, I don't know enough about that stuff, because it all fights me. So I try to stay away from it as much as possible. I don't know if it works here, it doesn't work.
It works, but it's, you know, it's not like a top-notch website. We could spend a lot of money and have a really fancy one.
But no, I'd like to talk about that. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
See? That's what I'm saying. Everybody has great ideas here. For the cemetery committee? We have a new applicant. And most of these are returning. There's five names in front of me.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one's opposed, so it's unanimous.
Mentioned who we appointed.
Yeah, well, yes, thank you. Natalie Ricker, Patricia Ricker, Daniel McNeil, Sheila McNeil, and Katrina Randall. Been reappointed to the cemetery committee. Ordinance Review Committee, there's two applicants.
I move that both applicants who are up for reappointment be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so no one's opposed, it's unanimous. For the ordinance review committee, we just reappointed Eric Green and Steven Marola. And I apologize if I didn't pronounce his name right, but I'm not sure. Parks and Rep Committee, we have a reappointment application.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that was Park and Rep Committee, Tracy Tatro. There are the zoning board of appeals. We have one applicant who's been on the board for many years.
I move in favor of reappointment.
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed, so it's unanimous that we had appointed Bruce Fearon for zoning board of appeals. And we'll move on to item six, which is the minutes.
I move that the minutes for the, oh, sorry.
You weren't here.
Never mind. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Joe wasn't here, so he's not gonna, he's not gonna know either. It passes. Thank you. And item number seven is to sign the warrants. We have payroll warrant number fifty-four. The amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents.
Nope.
No.
I'm in the wrong, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's, this is their, that's their
Sorry, I'm new at this. Oh, there it is, look at that. All right, I scratched that, and
Oh, no, it's not even that one. It's this one. Should shake it from the, from the agenda.
Wait a minute, what?
Let's, I think it's second page, forty-eight thousand four thirteen.
It's this one on the second.
Yeah, forty-eight thousand
Oh, okay, sorry. I had pointed that out to you, and I thought that's what you had, so I didn't wanna steer you wrong.
Right, so I'm gonna start this over again. Payroll warrant number fifty-four in the amount of forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixteen cents.
Hold on. You said fifty-four? Warrant fifty-four?
That's what it said on the
I have forty-eight, six, twenty-one, eighty.
All right, we go through this every year.
Ah, yes, we did. You're right.
And I didn't bring my script.
You're right.
Okay.
So moved. You're right.
But actually, there's two different numbers.
Yeah, there's two different amounts. I had a little script, I didn't bring it with me. It's the difference between some people who buy into certain benefits. So Jeanette does a much better job explaining it on the benefit side. Whether you approve one amount or the other, it doesn't really matter. I just always
It's all number fifty-four, okay. Any more discussion?
So we second it?
Second.
Now, is there any more discussion? I'm not really falling apart my first time as chair, I promise. Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed, cause it's unanimous. I have Counts payable warrant number fifty-five in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved. Approved.
I'll second for discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Do you know, did Jeanette talk to you? So those were gonna be voided?
Yep.
So should we minus those out of the
You don't have to, cause we're gonna, we've already voided them.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, which items are being
Okay, so I had called Jeanette earlier today to speak to her on page four. The GMFR. The, probably not the Chevy truck, but the other four are gonna be voided.
It shows Dayton's and Lyman's share, where it should just show Lyman's.
I see.
Yeah, so it's just a duplicate. The other one will get voided.
Okay.
So, okay, so I'm okay with that.
Reminds me that the command car is lettered and in service.
Oh, good.
It's a beautiful car. But anyway, is there any more discussion on that? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed, cause it's unanimous. You gotta sign stuff, right?
Yeah.
That's what we do next?
Yeah.
Can adjourn until then?
Yes.
All right.
I can sign now.
I'll get this. Send one that way.
Send it that way, that way I'll, I'll drop him down. I'll drop the job.
I'll collect them all, bring them down.
I don't know if we're supposed to sign both of those without a witness. I think there's plenty of witnesses here.
I notarize it at the end.
Okay. Awesome. And that one. You already signed this one, Dave.
That's the planning board bylaws.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Then
Sorry, Jay.
Are these the ones you already signed?
Yes, sir.
Amber's, Amber's appointment to the Eco Main representative, it has a whiteout, it says, "Don't sign, Amber." I like it. Good idea.
Given that I wasn't here for the vote on the planning board, planning board bylaws is purple. Do I sign?
Up to you. Totally up to you.
Well, similar to the situation with the minutes, because I wasn't here.
Okay.
So you're not gonna sign those?
No.
Dave already did that, so that'll be Amber's.
Okay.
Ah, it's appointment season. How many of those things do you drink in a day?
About three.
Nice.
No, it's not nice, cause all I do is go to the bathroom.
Well. I get the, I had a, had a bout of dehydration recently. Hey, I think we're about halfway.
Actually, you stand for, no, that's not it. Now yours will have Sue's Del Rosa signature on it. That's the annual order for the application of payments to unpaid taxes. You voted on that. Okay.
Don't pass those to Joe.
Thank you. Thank you. That one needs Joe's.
All right, there's that one.
Um, yeah, Joe needs this one. This is the planning board.
Probably thought I was absent from the
He's not signing that, because he wasn't here.
Oh, he wasn't here for that meeting, okay.
Okay, awesome. Yep.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so don't give this one to Dave. Don't give it to Dave. Don't let him see it.
He's not in the box, man.
He's not here.
I think, yeah, I was gonna say, what movie is that? That's yours then. She didn't have Raiders Scrampt yet, who will?
I'm not buying a house, I hope.
True, or a car.
Yeah.
Or you're buying a car?
Nope. I'm gonna drive mine until it's dead.
Nice.
Which will be when it runs out of registration.
Beautiful, you guys are all on top of it tonight.
There's a bunch of tie votes, that all got one vote, so we have to ask them if any of them want it.
I know, as I was putting my, like, oh, wait.
We gotta make sure none of them want it.
What position was that for?
School board.
He's gonna go with Dave.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I was just thinking of the one that I wrote in for school board, that's I never thought anybody would get to call, but he'll probably get a call. Especially if it can't, oh, he would know it was me anyway.
Sit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's easy still. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Joe, thank you for thanking me.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm keeping
They might want to ask you.